Good evening. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct the business of the Gettysburg Area School District. Public comment is welcome and issues will be referred to the appropriate board committee or administrator. Comments will be summarized in your official board minutes, which will be available by making contact with the business office. Please take a moment to silence your cell phones and any other electronic devices. No worries. All members are present this evening for tonight's meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No notices. No communications. Jason?
Sure, just one communication from Dr. Lee for the curriculum office. I guess your last communication to the board, and Dr. Matzner is here tonight. Today was his first day with us in the district, so thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening. I would like to provide an update regarding our K through eight core literacy program adoption. In 2014, when I first entered the district, we had adopted a core reading program called Journeys from the Hoot Mifflin Heart Court vendor for grades K through five that were aligned with the PA Core standards. Since then, we have replaced the phonemic awareness and phonics components of Journeys with materials more aligned to the science of reading. The only components of Journey we currently use, Journeys, that we currently use are the listening and reading comprehension. In 2021, we were made aware that the purchase of the Hoot Mifflin Heart Court Journeys digital platform and consumable materials would no longer be available as of 2020-23. At this time, we began to consider options for replacement. Also, in 2016, we had adopted the Core ELA Program Collections by Hoot Mifflin Heart Court for grades six through eight, and it too will be obsolete in 2023. So fast forward to the 22-23 school year, a committee of K-8 teachers, special education, and reading specialists and principals narrowed the selection to two options. The team agreed that the new program needed to align to the science of reading, have a favorable report, offer opportunities for students to build knowledge as they develop strong reading and writing skills, and support teachers with embedded professional development and implementation. On October 10th of 2022, the committee received a presentation from Amplify, CKLA, and CKELA, and Witten Wisdom. The committee unanimously decided to eliminate the Witten Wisdom option due to the amount of time it required for teachers to plan and implement the program, the purchasing requirement of numerous novels per grade level, and the lack of digital supports for teachers and students. We then scheduled site visits to districts implementing Amplify CKLA and CKELA in Cumberland Valley School District and Middletown School District. Committee members had the opportunity to do site visits and watch teachers teach the program and ask questions to learn more about the program. Currently, the committee teachers and other interested teachers are piloting Amplify thanks to the generosity of our representative from the company, Monica Vincent. Prior to the pilot, the teachers received professional development and time to plan for the implementation. The staff at Amplify have been both very responsive to our staff regarding questions and concerns during the pilot. The principals, instructional coaches, Dr. Matzner and I have an initial training for instructional leaders on Wednesday, February 8th. Funds needed to purchase the new core program for grades K through eight, professional development, their staff are designated in the SARP grant. Funds are available to purchase additional consumable materials and digital licenses for up to five additional years also. A set of teacher materials will be available for your review if interested by February 17th, 2023. Please contact Tracy Flores, now Dr. Matzner's support person, at extension 1408 to schedule a time. Thank you for your time and consideration of this request, and you can contact me if you have questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. Citizens' participation. Mike?
Yes, Mr. President, we have one public speaker tonight, Mr. Tim Smith. And whilst Mr. Smith is coming up, we would just like to remind everyone making public comment that this is a meeting of the Board of Directors of the Gettysburg Area School District, which we conduct the business of the district, and we encourage everyone making public comments to use the quorum when making public comments.
Hello? Is this on? This good?
You may want to, you may have to speak. Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
How you guys doing tonight? Everyone good? Okay. My name is Tim Smith. I'm a Gettysburg resident. I'm a GHS alum, and I am here sadly for not the best sort of news. It came to my attention that one of your members, Ryan Morris, was present on January 6th. This is deeply personal for me. My career in art has taken me to the Capitol for the past six years, and January 6th was sort of the cornerstone of watching this circus devolve into what it is in this country. I've started a small petition, and the petition is really just a feeler. It is just to get the vibe of what could be, because every single cycle, and I just call them cycles, we have where educated boards hit the mainstream news for one reason or another. And having a member who is there at Stop the Steal, employed at Stop the Steal, does not look good. I do not want Gettysburg to be on the national news for anything other than the excellence of the students that we produced, right? So I just want to ask a few questions just to make sure I have my facts right, because I do not want to slander anyone in this room. Am I allowed to address the board member?
Typically during public comment, historically, we've not done a back and forth question and answer. If there's something related that can be an immediate answer related to something on, for example, the agenda and stuff, we've made exceptions so that you don't walk out and get an answer.
Okay.
But obviously, I don't know what question you would have.
Understandable. I would just like to link a few things in that I've read, and I would like to offer Morris the opportunity to rebut any of it if it's not true. Again, I do not want to slander anyone in here. We're going to start with a Gettysburg Times article that was written in May 6, 2021. This was the article about just like meet the board member, who are they, what are they running for? And I'm quoting him here. He said, "I think it's important that we strongly encourage factual instruction of American history and civics." Later, I read another Reuters article, and this was about the January 6th and people that were training police with possible far-right links. And in it, there was a social media post from Tripwire, his company, that said, "You have just witnessed a coup, the overthrow of the U.S. reelection system, the end of our constitutional republic, and the merge of capitalism into the slide towards socialism." And he's speaking in this about the election itself, not about actual January 6th, the actions that were taken there. Also in the article, there was apparently a photo taken midway into the three-hour breach of the Capitol that was later removed. And when pressed about what was in the photo, Mr. Morris said he did not recall. Am I having this like correct, that you guys will basically create a curriculum for the students of the Gettysburg School District? No?
Grade curriculum, board approved curriculum?
Okay, so you will approve the curriculum. With that said, I still strongly feel that it is inappropriate for someone who denied the election to be able to approve any sort of curriculum for the civics building of the Gettysburg students. This petition is very small right now, and I think it's like 130-some, you know, people that signed it. And all I've done in order to like show this petition around was to share it to one small group, my personal page, and maybe one friend, and then I just let it go, because I didn't want the snowball into anything bigger. I had maybe six personal likes, seven personal likes on it, but it had 130-plus signs. I don't want it to get any bigger. I don't know what you all can do about this. Like, you're an elected official. I'm not up here to say, you know, oh, get 20 strong guys and all, you know, sort this out. That's not me, that's not us. But this is still highly inappropriate. I want to go up to the Capitol again tomorrow for the State of the Union. This is what I do. I'm an artist. I go up there and I draw history in action. Been doing it for years now. And I'm telling you, I was there Saturday, and I already saw snipers getting ready in 16-degree weather on the buildings around the Capitol, like they're preparing for stuff because now we're in the age of this stuff happening more and more and more. The second issue is with Ms. Myers. And again, I don't want to slander, so I'm just trying to understand what happened here. I watched a board meeting on the 5th, I believe, December, where Harry Hartman mentioned that you were working for, where is it? Aramark? Is that correct? It's alleged that you accessed the security cameras inappropriately, and it's alleged that you've harassed teachers and/or students. It's also my understanding that you are now employed by Morris, and that there might be other board members as well that are either privately contracted, pay-contracted, or employed by Morris as well. These are conflicts of interest. And again, it's very disheartening to have the idea that someone who was at January 6th, who now has someone who used security cameras inappropriately, who's being paid by that person, these are conflicts of interest.
Mr. Smith, you're about two minutes over time. Are you ready to conclude?
Yes. In the final statement, I would encourage the members of the Gettysburg community to take a better look at what's happening here. Again, this is a free election, right? You're all elected members here. Whatever tactics you used to get here, whether it was fear-baiting or whatever, you're here. I'm not denying that. But the board should consider what it looks like to outsiders, what it looks like to people who want to bring their kids into this district. Thank you for your time.
Mr. President, may I speak?
Yes.
So I'm going to address to you, sir, direct. I've been a police officer for 24 years. In 24 years, I've been called lots of things throughout that career, but what I just heard you call me is non-patriotic, and I take deep offense to that. I ran for this office so that I could better, the school system that my, I have children in this school system. And what I just heard from you is that you're citing news from a worldwide socialist website, which has no basis, no factual basis. For 24 years as a police officer and a bomb squad commander, to also include my work with the Department of Homeland Security, I protected the people and the constituents in this area from weapons of mass destruction, from harms that could befall them. I was present at Flight 93 for a month and a half, and I had the remains of the people at that flight in my hands. So you stand there and tell me that I'm not a patriot, that I don't stand for everything this country is, I take some serious, I'm mad. So you don't know me, you don't know the people that work at my country, or at my company, and I'll be done in a second. Everyone that works at my company and I surround myself with are all decorated military and law enforcement professionals. So you need to do your homework, sir, because you standing there making allegations, that's not going to fly. I ran for this office to help the betterment of the school district, not to do anything alternative motives like you would say. I'm done, Mr. President.
The only thing I would say, and this is what I was fearing going into this, is public comment wasn't a back and forth question and answer type of thing. And I'm trying to be respectful across the board because that's my very nature. And you can go back and look at even through COVID, we allowed back and forth and answer a question. I mean, Mr. Morris just took an opportunity to explain where his position was. I'm not going with anybody on the board, allow the back and forth as we move through, and I hope you understand that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you, sir.
But I never called you unpatriotic, and I was at the Million Bag of March.
You need to sit down. Your period for public comment has ended. Thank you.
Moving on. Is there anything additional? Is there any others?
No, Mr. President, that was it.
Moving on to routine approvals, 5.1 through 5.4. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Question on the motion on the floor of routine approvals, 5.1 through 5.4. Hearing none, roll call. Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy Beth?
Yes.
Timmin?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Congratulations to the mid-year graduates.
Yeah, there was quite a few. That was pretty remarkable. Items for board action. The first one this evening is 6.1, approval of the 23-24 school calendar. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Question?
Dr. Perrin, do we, do we have one traditional snow day built in there? Thank you.
That's all we ever have.
Any additional question? Hearing none, roll call. Tim?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Timmin?
Yes.
Amy Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. 6.2, the approval of the five-year plan, design, and construction services for the administration building window replacement project. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Timmin?
Yes.
Amy Beth?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. 6.3, approval Warrior Stadium site assessment for additional addition of team rooms. Motion, please. Hearing none. Amy Beth?
No.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Timmin?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Brings us to our informational items. 7.1, Lincoln Intermediate Unit, general operating budget.
It's on the agenda every year about this time. All of the member districts approve a budget, so it's information this meeting, it'd be an actual item on the next meeting. If questions come up between now and then, feel free to email Belinda.
Just a quick, Belinda, just a quick question. This, this year's proposed budget for LIU compared to last year? Do you know off the top of your head?
I do not know, but I can provide that information to you at the next time.
This is the same one where our member, I believe, voted no and gave themselves a raise. Is that the same thing?
We have our next meeting tomorrow night, and I have not been very supportive of some of the directions that the board has taken, although I can update you at the next meeting.
Thank you. But that is, this is the one you, we, good.
If I may, Mr. President, the amount that the contribution level, that's what this basically the budget is, is the contribution level, that remains the same, if not less, like $30-some dollars than current year, but I can provide that information for you for the next meeting.
Any additional questions? 7.2, facilities improvement project.
7.2 is just information for this meeting. It was moved forward from a previous finance and facilities meeting. It'll be on a future finance facilities agenda and back at the board, so if there are questions along the way, then we can, you know, address those at that time, too.
Board committee reports.
Yes, Mr. President, the next policy committee meeting will be held on February 14th at 4:00 p.m. here in the administration building.
Building and finance will meet on the 23rd, I believe it is, of February.
That was rescheduled, right? This is 23rd? Yeah.
Any additional? Program reports?
Belinda has, Belinda has a couple of budget variables that she just wanted to share as information. We're not at the point where we're, you know, projecting budgets or anything like that at this point, but we are aware of some costs and things to be aware of as we start through that process in the coming months, so wanted to share that during program reports this evening.
All right, thank you. So before you this evening is just some initial budget variables that we will be looking at for the 23-24 school year. Sorry. There we go. So for our 23-24 school year, some of the variables, if you recall, we've passed a budget on the 22-23 school year with basic ed subsidy remaining at level. The governor came through and passed a budget, and so we will need to consider increasing the basic ed subsidy by $687,086. Again, our special education costs will continue to rise. That's no surprise. We find that we have a need more and more every day. Families will move in that will request services in need. Our homeless population has increased, and so therefore, any sort of special education services will continue to be growing. Another item to discuss is for the 23-24 school this year, we will have less ACTI. ACTI is Adams County Career Technical Center, revenue and cost as they continue to move towards independence entirely in its entity. So we will see the next year's budget with a change in terms of how we report and how we pay our, or excuse me, our account of our revenue as well as our expenditures for our functions that happen with ACTI. Again, I'd like to mention that our adjusted index, not to exceed, the board did adopt the resolution not to exceed, but I'd just like to point out that this is the highest index, adjusted index ever for Gettysburg. This is, this even predates Act One. So to me, that tells me that inflation has a huge play and will have a huge play in what our budget does next year. Other variables to mention, for the first, one of the first times, we are experiencing anomaly for our health care. Next year, our premiums for our staff will increase 12% alone. Gettysburg is required to submit $1.3 million to LBT, above current level cost, just to maintain that 12% minimum increase. If the number is not able to submit, healthcare costs would increase unbelievably about 20, 22% above current year level cost. So in order to help smooth out those rates since we self-insured, it is, the number that we're going to be working with is $1.3 million of new expenditures for 23-24. Our labor costs will continue to rise, and that's all increased and based on established contracts as it is. Along with that, we have transportation cost index has risen for next year. The added fuel costs, as well as anything with the index associated with the contract, it will increase minimally of $600,000 as well. We do have a little bit of good news. We have small reprieve on our Piers rate. Initially, our rate, as it stands right now, is 35.2. Initially, our rate, as it stands right now, is 35.26%, and the certified rate for PISers for next year has been certified at 34%, which is down 3.6%. However, the rate is still anticipated to climb to 38%, and while it says 2030 on that slide, it's actually, it will hit, from all the projections that PISer has said, till 2028, it will be over 38% and then continue on. Cyber charter still remains a concern, of course. Our year-end '22, we had $4.2 million in cyber charter cost, which is greater than what we had initially budgeted, $3.9 million. So again, that's something that we're going to keep our eye on for the next year. And other factors will definitely be involved in responding to the inflation. We're not immune to any of the cost increases. What's hitting us hardest next year will be the health care, and so I don't envision that changing over the next two, three years either, unless we start to see some better claims costs coming through. Lastly, I want to keep this short and sweet as, you know, honoring your time commitment. The next steps for us for the budget, since this was just preliminary, talking about some variables that we are facing, we will, we plan to review with the administrators their budgets in depth on the second and third week of February. And we will continue to review expenditures from the 2223 current school year to analyze and see if there are any possible spending efficiencies in the current year that we could take effect in for the following year. The timeline, as it sees fit, February, we will bring some, you know, information covering our audit on the, so then the very next board meeting, Smith, Elliot, and Kearns will be here, Representative Krista Gardner will be here to present our final audit, and so therefore, you know, we can start planning from that point, too, as well forward. March will have some additional cabinet meetings, working to finalize budget requests with administrators. April, information items that will be associated with the draft budget. March will see and adopt a proposed budget. It's not final, it's just recommending to adopt the proposed budget, proposed budget to get it on the target for the required timeframe to have a budget passed by June. The plan is, at this particular point in time, May 15th, to have a public hearing on the proposed budget, so community as well as board and, or this, here, obviously, will have time to review the information. And then, of course, June 5th is the timeline at this particular point for have adopted final budget for the 2324 school year. And we will keep in reserve the 19th in the event that we need to have some more discussions with the board if the June 5th date will not seem to suit.
Right, it's a draft, a draft timeline for a draft budget.
Yeah.
And we'll post this to the website tomorrow in case anybody was trying to write it down.
Correct. It'll be available tomorrow.
We ask a question. Belinda, my understanding with the first-year governor, they get a little leeway, and I believe they, I don't think he's doing a budget presentation until early March at some point. Chances of us having an idea on how much subsidy that we would be getting from Gettysburg will probably be delayed as a result of that. I know it's very frustrating for us to project where that's going to be. Last year, we ended up getting more than we anticipated and so on. Have you heard anything regarding that, or I guess we'll...
It has been silent as to what is to anticipate on the following year's budget. I know colleagues across the state are, with the new funding formula and the basic aid model, it's recommended that you at least budget and have your whole harmless amount in, and we do. So anything that comes out over and above would be factored in, just as it is, we will factor in the additional for the 2223 school year that we received. I'm not going to recommend putting that entirely in to the 24 budget simply because, and anticipated to be there in perpetuity, because the likelihood of it staying will not be. It was a one-time big push to receive additional state funding, and so I do not anticipate receiving that type of increase again, especially with a new governor in place.
And then with the audit process wrapping up, we'll, we'll learn at that time, the board will learn at that time, how much actual dollars that we have in our fund balance, our savings account, to be able to utilize after that audit is completed.
Yes, I anticipate having to, we will be required at this particular point, and very early on in these variables, we will be using fund balance to balance the budget next year, just how much we will be using fund balance, and as well as examine what other areas we can look at, trimming the budget if there is any before we consider tax increases. That's usually the last thing we like to try to hold at bay, see where we can make the changes and where we can effectively, without necessarily affecting the programs that we currently have in place.
Any additional? Thank you, Belinda. Our next scheduled board meeting is February 21st at 2023 at 7:00 o'clock here in the administration boardroom. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.